To call this meeting to order and we'll start with a moment of reflection. Thank you. And next on the agenda here is confirmation of the agenda. For August the fourth, we have no additions or deletions. Yeah, somebody want to move, we approve the agenda? Counselor McDermott, Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor? That's carried. And now we're going to move on to consent agenda. We have items five point one to five point one four. And as well, the July seventh twenty two council minutes. Does anyone want to see anything pulled? Counselor Kasen, Hessenberg, sorry.
Good morning, Warden, nature senate council. I would like to suggest that we support formally the items five point five, five point six, five point seven, which is all the same matter. And also item five point eight.
Okay. I'm not assuming there's going to be a lot of discussion on that, so how do we discuss it right now? So Counselor Kastenberg would like to see five point five, five point six, five point seven. And though all three are related to the Draven alert. Does someone want to make a motion that we support? Sending out correspondence, Counselor Kastenberg, you want to move that? I got a second or Counselor McDermott? Any discussion? All in favor? Gary? And then we're going to move on to five point eight, you said, right? Five point eight, Tom? Position shortage. Anybody, any comments on that one? Anyone want to make a motion to support Counselor Kastenberg, seconded by? Counselor Duncan? Those in favor? And that's carried. Okay. Anything else anyone wants to see pulled or discussed? Not seeing anything or anyone? So the motion will read, council receives consent agenda items five point one to five point one four. And approves the July seventh, two thousand and twenty two council minutes. Moved by Counselor. Oh, excuse me, Kelly. Seconded by Counselor Willhite. Last chance for discussion. Those in favor? That's carried. I know I don't have COVID, I've just been in too much dust. But that might have subsided after last night. Okay, now we're going to move on to public meetings, public hearings and delegations. And I need a motion. That regular council recess for the purpose of holding a planning public meeting at approximately. Oops. Nine oh three, moved by. Counselor Duncan, seconded by. Counselor McDermott. Okay, those in favor? That's carried. Okay, so now we're recess for a public meeting. And next I need a motion that the O P A number two oh six public meeting August fourth, two thousand and four twenty two agenda be approved. Counselor Kastenberg, seconded by. Counselor McDermott, oh, Counselor Hermit's got his name up, I'll use Counselor Hermit. Those in favor? Gary? Okay, and next on the agenda would be that the council approves the minutes of July seventh, two thousand and twenty two public meeting for O P A two oh seven and O P A two oh eight. Motion to do that? Counselor Duncan, seconded by Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor? That's carried. And I also have to make the comment that the disclosure of pecuniary interest at now or at any point in time through this public meeting? Okay, so we've got that minutes approved. And we are now moving on to. The report, that's Susanna, ready?
We'll bring Susanna and potential Sally.
Okay. So I'll have them give the report and then we'll do the delegations. That was a lot of reading. I didn't read it word for word. Good morning, Susanna. Oh, there's Sally too, perfect. So we're ready for your report on this O P A.
Thank you very much. And good morning, council. So I have prepared some slides to review this application and I'll share those now. All right, this is a official plan amendment for the county of Perth official plan, which is, has, the applicant has applied for a site specific amendment to permit a mixed use development at lot thirty concession one in the Elma ward of the municipality of North Perth. And the map on the screen now you'll recognize is Listwell. So the red star is the location of the subject property. It's immediately west of Mitchell Road South, north of Twomley Road and south of Kincaid Road. The applicant is a numbered company care of Nizar Moani and Pierre Chauvin at M H B C is the planning consultant on this file. So these are two area photos that have been provided by the applicant. Showing the location of the subject property on the left air photo here, it's outlined in red. So it's a four point six acre property. And it's designated urban fringe in the Perth County official plan with a special policy to permit commercial, the development for commercial purposes. You can see that it's west of Mitchell Road South, highway twenty three. And the air photo on the right shows the adjacent land uses. So it's across the road from Zara's Walmart and the L C B O. South of Kincaid Street here. This area is currently being developed for residential purposes. And there are apartment buildings south of Twomley Street West in this location. Here are some site photos of the property, so. One is standing here on Twomley Street looking at the subject property, so I'm looking east. And two is standing on the east side of highway twenty three, looking at the subject property here. Again, I've just changed the way that I was standing, so looking immediately west. Along Twomley Road here. So the subject property is here. On the right, right handed side of the screen, and you can see that there are multi residential apartment buildings built on the south side of Twomley. Again, I'm looking further south and west on highway twenty three. And the same two apartment buildings are shown in the photo. This is the residential development that is in progress on the west side of the subject property. And now, standing and looking in the opposite direction, so the subject property is here. And you can see Walmart, Zara's and the L C B O on the other side of twenty three. And finally, this is standing at the L C B O and looking west. At the Pioneer Gas Bar. So this is Kincaid Street, looking west along Kincaid Street. So back to the designation and the official plan, the purple designation here is an urban fringe designation in the Perth County official plan. So the, there is a site specific policy for this property that requires that the land be developed for commercial purposes. So the policy is here on the, on the screen as well. So this was a site specific policy, O P A one sixty two. And this is the policy that the application is requesting to amend. So they would like to amend this to permit a mixed use development, both residential and highway commercial uses. The provincial policy statement defines settlement areas as being the focus of growth and development. So for the purposes, and a settlement area is a built up area where development is concentrated, which will have a mix of land uses. So for the purpose of this site specific property, the planning department is of the opinion that this property is considered a settlement area because there is a policy that, that specifies that it will be developed for commercial purposes. I then want to just make the point that the, that the property is within the county official plan, which is, and the defining line between the county official plan and the Listwell official plan is Mitchell Road South. So I've added a dotted red line to show that this defining area. And then the map on the, on the east side of Mitchell Road South is from the Listwell official plan. So this red, these red lines are a highway commercial designation and the Mitchell official plan. So I'll just, I just wanted to make that point and I'll make a few more comments later on that are relevant. Point out that some of the policy considerations that are relevant to the subject site because it's in the urban fringe designation. So. Okay, so here is a drawing provided by the applicant that shows a possible development scenario for the site, and there have been a few concept plans. At this point, what the critical discussion is with regards to the policy amendment that proposes to change the development from highway commercial or for development for commercial purposes to a mixed use site. So that's what we're discussing today. And what the planning comments have summarized what key planning considerations for this amendment. So you can see that there are four apartment buildings that are proposed here that are shown as block A, B, C, D. So those are here, shown as elevation drawings. Block A, B, C, D are all, so the three at the back at the west side are residential apartment buildings. This building block D is proposed to be a residential apartment building with commercial on the main floor. And block E is a six unit commercial building. So this summarizes then the most recent drawing. And as shows that this possible development scenario is two hundred and four residential units and thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty square feet of commercial development. So the planning considerations that are summarized in the staff report and I have them on the slide here now, and I propose to walk through these planning considerations. As they are relevant to the consideration of O P A two oh six. So the first is where is commercial land available in Listwell? So as the land is proposed to be changed from being just used for commercial purposes to being a mixed use, commercial and residential. That's one of the considerations for O P A two oh six. The second is affordable housing targets. As you can see, there are many, two hundred and four residential units is certainly needed in the Listwell area and Perth County generally. Three is the residential design density considerations for this development. And finally, there are considerations with regards to traffic and access to the property. So the, there has been significant review of the commercial land needs in the Listwell settlement area. And this was completed in two thousand and eighteen by a consulting firm, Altus Group. And this two thousand and eighteen report is in the council package. So the two thousand and eighteen retail market study determined that there was a need for twenty three point seven acres of land for commercial purposes in two thousand and twenty, and by two thousand and thirty one, forty one acres were required in order to accommodate two hundred and fifty eight thousand square feet in two thousand and twenty of commercial area and four hundred and forty six thousand square feet of commercial area in two thousand and thirty one. So the, the, the map of Listwell on the right hand side of the screen is provided from this twenty eighteen Altus Group's retail market study and shows the Listwell shopping nodes. So it's downtown Listwell, north on Wallace Ave. And on the area where O P A two oh six is located, so on Mitchell Road South. So I make this point because the, this land is a significant commercial land base for the Listwell development review. So in. So here is the subject property again, an air photo of the subject property. And in two thousand and eighteen, when the Altus Group study was prepared, there, the Pioneer Gas Bar had not yet been severed. So the severance of the Pioneer Gas Bar happened after the two thousand and eighteen retail market study. So that is a shown outline in this yellow dotted line. And then in two thousand and twenty two, the Altus Group reviewed the O P A two oh six again, peer reviewed the, the application that we're considering today. And at that point, the Pioneer Gas Bar had been removed. So this is the property that is being considered for O P A two oh six. As I mentioned, it's a four point six acre property. So in two thousand and eighteen, the development potential, the commercial development potential for the property was identified as fifty five thousand square feet to sixty thousand square feet of commercial area. And in twen, in June of this year, because the Pioneer Gas Bar has been removed, it was identified as being able to accommodate forty thousand square feet to fifty thousand square feet. And the various development scenarios that have been provided by the applicant are for a much reduced commercial area. So this is the impact of adding a mixed use development to the subject property is that it greatly reduces the commercial area for the property. So that, that is provided to you for information for consideration with regards to the merits of the development as proposed. The second planning consideration is with regards to affordable housing targets. So I made the point earlier that the development is in the urban fringe of the county official plan. So as, as it's within the urban fringe, there are not affordable housing targets. The Listwell official plan states that a minimum of twenty percent of all housing units to be provided within Listwell Ward shall be within the affordable affordability range for this area as defined by the province. So, and the P P S provides a definition of affordability. And as these units are proposed to be rental units, the rent does not exceed. It's defined as affordability is defined as rent, which doesn't, does not exceed thirty percent of the gross annual household income for low and moderate income households. So affordability then is a range. It depends on the income of any, any household. So if we're using the median income from North Perth, according to the twenty twenty Stats Canada data, this would be eighty four thousand dollars a year, so affordability would be twenty one dollars, sorry, twenty one hundred dollars a month. If we're using the living wage as calculated by the United Way, it would be eight hundred and seventeen dollars a month. And the applicant is, is working with the United Way and C M H C to see if they can develop the residential units, fifteen percent of the residential units as affordability. So that, I mean, that we can also see would be beneficial for the Listwell community. And is weighed against the need for commercial lands in Listwell. The third planning consideration that the planning department has identified in our review is the residential design and density. So this is a new type of development, the mixed use and higher residential density is a new for Listwell. And as it is new, it is important to consider what, what is the density level that the municipality and the county are content with in this development area. So I've provided here with the two hundred and four units, which is the version of the development that I, that I'm showing in these slides. That works out to a hundred and ten units per hectare. The county official plan provides direction for forty to sixty units per hectare as the highest density that's being considered. So this is greater than is considered in the Perth County official plan. And note that the urban fringe designation is not within a Perth County settlement policy area. So this is not specifically relevant to the, to the urban fringe designation and is offered for information purposes. And then the final planning consideration for this specific development is with regards to traffic impact. So we have received comments from B M Ross on behalf of North Perth with concerns about the access onto Twomley Road South. And the, in this version, the developer is working on responding to the applicant or the engineering comments with regards to the location of the access, but the concern is with regards to queuing in order to enter onto Twomley Road South. From, sorry, Twomley Street, from Mitchell Road South. The, also the traffic impact study has, that has been provided, does not consider the residential development to the west. And there is also now a proposal for the south side of Twomley Street. And the concern is with regards to the alignment of the entrance from the proposed development here. Not being, which could conflict with the development to Twomley. The development on the south side of Twomley Street. So that includes the planning department's review of the planning issues for O P A two oh six. And this meeting today is a public meeting in order to receive comments from the public.
Thank you, Susanna. At this point, any questions from counselors on this? Counselor Deputy Warden Nagus, you see your hand up there?
Yeah, I just, so the map you just showed us, that's different than the map that's in our package, is that correct?
The site design, yes, there have been a variety of sites that have been provided. And site designs, the critical question for at this, for the official plan amendment is with regards to whether it's appropriate to change the commercial designation to a mixed use development. So the details with regards to the site design are provided for information purposes, and the higher level question is whether or not it's appropriate to change the commercial designation to a mixed use designation.
Other questions or comments? Okay, we do have a couple delegations. And the first one would be Pierre Chauvin.
Yeah, we'll bring them both in.
And we're going to bring them, actually, we have M H B C planning limited as well, so we'll get those both brought in. There we go.
So just wait for Pierre.
Down the bottom corner. Okay, so we have our two delegations on the screen. We have Pierre Chauvin from M H B C, and he will go first.
Thank you, Warden, members of council, members of the public. My name is Pierre Chauvin. I'm a planner and a partner at M H B C planning at a Kitchener. Here on behalf of the owner, which is Sean Hudson. And the applicant, which is the number company as Susanna alluded to earlier. I'm just, I've got a slide presentation, I'll just share my screen here for me. Just bear with me here. The computer is. There we go. All right. So a lot of these slides Susanna touched upon, but these are a couple images of the site location on your left. And the mixed use building, which is on the corner of Twomley, proposed on Twomley and Mitchell Road. As Suzanne indicated, these lands are on the west side of Mitchell Road at the, I'll call the entrance of Listwell. And opposite other highway commercial uses, there's Walmart, the L C B O. There's a newer commercial development further to the north, proposing a Starbucks and Taco Bell, et cetera. So your typical kind of street, highway commercial, street commercial type of uses. On the east side, though, is an emerging residential development, and I'll get into more detail in the next few slides. But. Oops, now my screen is gone blank. Apologize. Are you able to see that now?
No.
No, okay. Just bear with me here, I don't sure what's going on.
Yeah, CEO official plan amendment, request amendment.
Okay. Just going to do this. Working on a different computer this morning, so I'm not familiar with its function, so apologize about this.
So we, I see you, the first slide you showed us was the apartment building, but.
Pierre, I believe you have a blank slide in between, I just got accidentally inserted. So if you just use the arrow keys, you should be able to move through.
Yeah.
And then one more?
There we go.
Okay, now we're going.
So. Technology, gotta love it when it works and gotta hate it when it doesn't. So this is a, an excerpt of the county official plan, as Suzanne indicated, this is an urban, currently urban fringe, which only permits commercial. As Suzanne indicated, this amendment is really seeking to effectively introduce residential uses in the form of a mixed use development, i.e. residential and commercial. This is not, not a new concept or phenomenon, actually to the south of us, which is identified as in the circle one eighty four. We had a recent amendment, you may, some of you may recall, we did re-designate these lands as well as mixed use. So there's a similar type of designation, and it's in fact the same policy framework that we're requesting on these lands that were approved under O P A one eighty four. And effectively to introduce residential uses on these lands. But not to lose that commercial function. That highway commercial function. There's also another parallel process involved, and I'll touch on this later through the presentation, but there is a concurrent zoning law amendment that we have to do with the municipality. A North Perth zoning law. So after this official plan is presumably approved, then we can move forward with the zoning law amendment. And then lastly, there's a site planner application associated with this application as well. So back to the site, as I indicated to the earlier. Through the east of us, there's an emerging residential area. And so we have this interesting situation or transition between the residential area to the highway commercial on the east side and then the highway commercial on the, sorry, the west side of Mitchell road and then the highway commercial on the east side of Mitchell. So really, this is, I see this as a sort of a transition area, and that's why we like to introduce this residential use. It's, like I said, it's not a new phenomenon in planning. It's something that is viewed as a, a way of intensifying and maximizing and efficiently using our land that we have, rather than having, as you can see, the traditional Walmart, Zara's type of parking lot, sea of parking. We're trying to intensify the use and maximize the land that we have and create a mixing of use whereby people can live, work and play in the same community. And what we call developing a complete community. And you can see on this image, we've drawn it's about an eight hundred meter radius, which is about a five minute walk. So even within this five minute walk, there's quite a bit of ability for future residents to be able to connect to existing trails, parks, and other community amenity spaces and commercial areas. And the. And the fact that um, you know, there are a lot of commercial uses and we are introducing commercial uses. Uh, we have to understand that there's a need for uh, people to live. If we're trying to introduce and encourage uh, commercial uses and employment uses, these future employees need somewhere to live, and that's essentially what we're trying to do. Is have a place for them to live as well as work in the same walking distance. Uh, so as Suzanne alluded to earlier, this is a, a mixed use development, it's about two hundred and four residential units. Our client is proposing and is working with the C M A C uh, program uh, they have uh, which and is dedicated to provide fifteen of the percent of the total number of units to be affordable. And I'll explain this later in the presentation. And in addition to those fifteen, another fifteen percent of those, the units that are proposed will be fully accessible. I accessible for any mobility issues. Uh, the, in terms of amenity space, we're proposing a number of uh, options there in terms of, you'll see on the concept, there'll be surface amenity spaces as well as rooftop and indoor spaces within the buildings for uh, the future residents. And it's about approximately thirteen thousand square feet of ground floor and commercial space proposed uh, based on the current concept today. Uh, here is the current concept, and I call it a concept because again, it's still evolving. As Suzanne indicated, uh, we had a couple uh, concepts submitted with the application. These are just prepared to help inform what we're trying to ask for and to help you understand what this could look like. Uh, this is where we're, we're, we're trending right now, so we're heading right now, and then as Suzanne indicated, we've made some adjustments based on some of the comments we've had heard from traffic, for example, and adjusting the accesses off Twomley. Uh, but uh, this is effectively the concept that we're moving forward right now. There's three uh, six-story apartments in total of two hundred and forty units, the thirteen thousand square feet of commercial space. And sufficient parking to all surface parking to accommodate uh, the uh, the both the commercial and residential uses. Uh, you'll know, know there is an existing gas station at the corner of Kincaid, Mitchell. This is owned by Pioneer or operated by Pioneer, owned by a different entity. Um, but um, there is no access uh, contemplated through uh, the gas station lands. Um, we have tried on numerous occasions to uh, gain access and to have the, the, the sites work together. Uh, to date, we haven't been successful working with those landowners. But nevertheless, we can, we've come up with a plan that still, in my mind, uh, functions. The only benefit of having that additional access to gas station is providing more access to commercial site makes it more uh, accessible to the uh, driving community. And the likely, the success of those commercial operations could be uh, greater with the uh, additional accesses. But like I said, having said that, we have, you can know, we have three separate accesses to this development, one on Kincaid and two on Twomley. And we've adjusted the second access to Twomley a little further west to provide for that additional queuing that was raised as a concern by the the municipality's traffic consultants. And uh, we have, we will continue to work with the municipality's traffic consultants as we go through this application to address their, their traffic concerns. Moving on to the next slide. So this is just a perspective uh, of the same development with the Mitchell Road in the foreground, Twomley on the left, Kincaid on the right. And just different perspectives again of uh, uh, renderings of the proposed mixed use building. And the standalone commercial building. So the affordable housing piece, um, our client's been working with uh, Canadian Mortgage and Housing through their uh, we have a, a program that's offered through uh, C M A C, and uh, we're looking to provide, like I said, fifteen percent of the total number of units, which equates to about thirty-one of the total units that we're proposing today uh, to be affordable. And C M A C defines affordability as similar to the P P S uh, as something that costs less than thirty percent of the median renter income. So this is affordable rental income. Um, and they've done a number of studies across the province and, and the country and uh, have established that the median rental income for rural centers across Ontario is about forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. This is based on uh, numbers from twenty nineteen. And if you extrapolate that in terms of a, a monthly rental income, that equates to about a thousand thirty-seven fifty uh, a month for rent, and that's where we'll certainly be for that uh, those affordable units. Uh, we, our client is also working in partnership with United Way. And uh, and I won't steal Mitchell under here, but he's here to speak on behalf of, of United Way. Uh, and uh, they're certainly supportive of uh, the proposal, and we will continue to uh, work with them and hopefully uh, provide the much-needed affordable housing uh, that's needed in the community. I just wanted to speak a bit about uh, some of the site challenges that we have because there's a lot of talk about the commercial uh, the, the amount of commercial that we're providing. I, I, I do want to stress that we're not uh, eliminating any commercial on this. We still want to have commercial uses on the property. It may be a little less, as Susan uh, indicated, than what the potential of this property is, but potential also is there for, for attainable and affordable housing to be developed on the site as well. But there's a number of things that have led us to go in, in part, has led us to go to this direction, and, and some of which relate to the site access, I told you, in terms of how we can get access to the property and its viability, that the impact it has on the viability of some of the uh, commercial space. Unfortunately, there's also a restrictive covenant that was put in place by the previous owners on these properties that have restricted things like a drive-throughs and restaurants um, on this property. Uh, that's an unfortunate circumstance. Uh, we've, we've been trying to get that changed. This requires a lot of legal matters. I can't comment on whether this will ever get changed, but that's the reality of the site for now, unfortunately. The site is a little challenged in terms of its configuration. You'll, you'll notice early, it's kind of a flag, a sort of a flag-shaped property. Uh, and with the, the kind of your Pioneer gas station limiting some of the access uh, uh, points again, which has an impact on how much commercial space we can put on there and how viable it may be. Um, and lastly, uh, and in terms, I'll go to the next slide. There are a number of other options out there. We're not the only game in town in terms of commercial space, and this slide here just uh, depicts uh, some of the commercial zoning uh, within Listowel. There's obviously in the downtown at the intersection of Wallace and Main Street. Uh, but there's also our lands uh, along Mitchell, and I identified in red. Uh, so, and then to the, uh, there's a number of other newer developments that have come uh, to fruition. Uh, so there are lands here which reflect, we're proposing about thirteen, fourteen thousand square feet of commercial. To the south of us, the approved uh, mixed use development has a maximum of thirty-two thousand square feet approved for commercial. Uh, recently, the municipality has just approved a commercial plaza with the Tim, uh, with the Starbucks and uh, I'm sorry, I forgot the other chain, but it is about twenty thousand square feet of uh, commercial space there. And to the very north of Listowel on Wallace, uh, the municipality owns quite a considerable amount of land and is proceeding to develop these lands through planet subdivision, which you'll probably see in the future at county. Uh, and approximately, there's a, a, a potential for four hundred thousand square feet of commercial on these lands. And when you add it all up, it gives you about four hundred and sixty-five thousand square feet of commercial space just on these lands identified here. Uh, I haven't gone through and looked at other places where you possibly intensify. Uh, for example, on even on the Walmart or Zara's lands. So there's ob- obviously lots of opportunity to achieve the projected demand that Altus, the market study that was completed by Altus, who they projected about four hundred and forty-six thousand square feet were required by twenty thirty-one. So we'll certainly uh, meet and exceed that. Even if uh, this were appro- approved with the post-commercial quantities that we're posing at this stage. So in terms, this is my second la- well, my last slide, and I just want to, I put this up here because at North Perth, it seemed to be a bit of confusion uh, when I was there presenting in terms of the process and where we're at. We're effectively uh, like we, like I said, there's three applications that are required here in official plan, which is what we're dealing with today. There is a zoning by law amendment as well, although there'll be a future site plan, and that's where we'll deal with the actual design of the site. Uh, building elevations, lighting, landscaping, and sort of getting into the minutia of the actual site design. But today, uh, we're effectively in the middle of the slide here, uh, where we have our public meeting. We also have planned um, a neighborhood information meeting for two weeks from now. Notices have gone out already for August seventeenth. And we invited members of council and staff and the, and the surrounding public to attend, and it'll be a virtual meeting, and, and folks here are welcome to attend as well. Our hope is that uh, we can bring this official plan amendment back to council in the very near future. Our client is very anxious to move this forward and start developing such that once the official plan amendment is approved, we can then move on to North Perth Council for the zoning by law. Um, and then from there, ideally, if the bylaws adopt, or we can move on with the site plan process. And all along there, uh, there are public, additional public engagement processes, so this isn't the first stop with the public. And uh, certainly look forward to receiving all these comments and uh, taking the feedback and perhaps uh, if needed, we need uh, uh, adjusting our plan to address some of the comments and feedback that we receive uh, through this process. So with that, that's uh, my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that uh, the council may have. Thank you.
Can you just eliminate this there? And we have, see some faces here.
Yep. Yeah.
For any skies.
All right.
Thanks.
Uh, see a hand up, uh, Deputy Ward Nagets.
Asked a few minutes ago about the site plan, what was different in our package. The site plan is huge in this decision, and Pierre has pretty well answered the questions because it does show that the parking is there. Um, it can be accommodated, and that was my biggest concern because that, the map we have in our package doesn't really justify that, but I thank you for showing that, and it would have been nice that we could have seen that ahead of time just to have a look. My other concern is the traffic going out on Mitchell Road South. Stoplights or what's going to be there to allow that traffic to turn left into Listowel? Like you, you're putting a, a large amount of people in a, in an area. Haven't been up there for a while, but how are you going to accommodate them making that left-hand turn?
Through you, uh, Mr. Warden, I think I, just to clarify, you're suggesting left-hand if you're coming north on Mitchell and left onto Twomley? Or?
I know, if you're on Twomley and then you're turning um.
Or exiting the site.
Right, into the village of, or into the town of Listowel.
Yeah, there will be, and again, it's uh, part of the traffic study analysis that done, but I believe there's, there's going to be a need for a left-turn lane out onto uh, Mitchell. And that's what the concern was with the traffic consultant is that, that we didn't have enough distance from the entrance uh, to the intersection, from our entrance to the intersection for queuing or stacking of vehicles as they're waiting to turn. But we've made some adjustments, adjustments and moved that entrance further away, so that allows for more stack. There will also, there is a traffic light at Kincaid in a turn lane. There's also a need for uh, a turn lane uh, at Twomley on Mitchell Road.
I realize there'll be a turn lane, but will that be enough to, like, I don't know how busy Mitchell Road South is, but I guess if there's one at Kincaid, I would think, so if I, me living there, I would be going up to the traffic light all the time to make that left-hand turn because it's going to be different, I think, for the people to get out onto that Mitchell Road South.
Well, that's, I guess, three minutes, Chair, that the benefit of, of our site is that we have access both to Kincaid and Twomley, so you can get a distribution of the traffic. So if there are queue, queuing concerns at Twomley, people will naturally go to that and stabilize intersection. Again, we'll be, we're, we've prepared a traffic study. The municipality has their traffic consultant and engineer, and they're reviewing these documents and certainly be uh, addressing their concerns um, through that process, and if whatever road improvements are required, then we'll be implementing it through uh, the development of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Willough.
Uh, just a question, a comment, I guess, and a question perhaps. Uh, I noticed that, of course, there's a tremendous amount of area for utilizing parking. Have you considered uh, underground parking to better utilize the property? And uh, perhaps you could even put more buildings on it.
Yes, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, it's a great question, uh, and we have, in fact. Uh, we have we have many iterations of concepts, uh, and you, you're seeing one of probably fifteen. Um, so, and one of which, several which are considered underground. As you can appreciate, uh, though, when you're, every uh, space of underground structured parking, whether it's above grade or below grade, the average cost right now with price of concrete, et cetera, is upwards of forty thousand dollars a space. Uh, that adds considerably to the viability of the project. And particularly when this is geared towards uh, rental and affordability. That, that kind of takes the whole equation, I don't think, throws this whole project uh, out the window, really, if we go to underground parking. So try to minimize our costs and, and go with surface parking as much as possible and provide the adequate amount of parking that's required by the bylaws.
I'm sorry, did you have your hand up?
I did, I just, when you kept flipping through the pictures there, there's four units, only one has commercial underneath it. Or are all, or could you be two or three or four have commercial units under the apartment building?
Here, Mr. Chair, another good question, and one of the, one of, only one at this point in time has commercial. One of the, I should point out, one of the stipulations by C M H C and, and providing their funding is that it has to be a single-use building, and, and uh, I think Mitchell can speak to this and some of their challenge they had in Listowel uh, with the library that they were pursuing to do. And uh, in any event, bottom line is that uh, C M H C didn't, does, only will fund buildings that are a single purpose, so that's why we have the three buildings, and affordability could be, you know, there's a floor in each building or, or one entire building, uh, we haven't worked that out. Uh, but for now, we're, uh, we have one building at the intersection of uh, uh, Kincaid and, and Mitchell with the commercial where there's highway exposure. Um, kind of, as you get deeper into the site, the sort of visibility and exposure from a commercial perspective, you can appreciate that may, that may not be as uh, sort of well-tenanted and occupied because of its lack of visibility. Uh, I'm not saying it can't happen, but uh, that's, those are some of the reasons why we've, we landed on, on the plan that we have for forty today.
Other questions? Councillor McDermott.
Uh, just wondering, on the, uh, on Mitchell Road, to get into your commercial development, uh, was there a traffic concern that you didn't have uh, access off of that, like, right into your uh, commercial building?
Off of Mitchell Road?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, uh, it is uh, it is somewhat of a concern now there, and that the challenge is, uh, he's, the, Mitchell used to be under M T O's jurisdiction, is now under uh, North Perth jurisdiction. Having said that, North Perth would like to limit the entrances to Mitchell for traffic flow, and I, I totally understand that. Um, the only entrance that there is going to be on that sec- that goes is the current write-in on Pioneer for the Pioneer gas station. And um, the thought was that we could utilize that and connect to our site internally as people are fueling up for getting their gas, they can go grab whatever else uh, on the road and carry on. Uh, unfortunately, like I said earlier, we don't have uh, access to the Pioneer, so for now we don't have any access out to Mitchell. We'll have to rely on Kincaid and, and Twomley.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Casper, I believe, had his hand up.
I'm fighting internet battles, uh, Mr. Warden, but uh, hopefully you can still hear me. Um, I just want to check in with um, with Pierre around the issue of the projections of commercial space in Listowel. Um, as uh, Mr. Chauvin recognizes at North Perth Council, uh, when this matter was presented. Um, as, uh, Mr. Chauvin recognizes at North Perth Council, uh, when this matter was presented, uh, one of the more significant concern of some counselors was that, um, you know, this land was part of the, the big picture of commercial space in, uh, Listwell that was required based on uh, estimates from economic studies plural now. Um, and, um, I note that you said that about four hundred thousand square feet of space would be available uh, in the, what is called the Moore Lands at the north end of Listwell. Um, I, I just happen to know, of course, that your firm also was involved in assessing the business case for the Moore Lands. And can you, when, when you say four hundred thousand square feet available at the Moore Lands, is that consistent with the report that your firm did on the Moore property?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, yes, it is. That's where I, I got the numbers from.
Okay, so I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Other questions? Not seeing any. So now we'll hear from Mitchell Rhodes. He is the Director of Community Renewal Company, United Way Perth Huron, and he had some internet issues, but I see he's got his video and his audio. We're good.
Good morning, Warden. Good morning, Councillors, and good morning, public. If, uh, if you can't hear me, uh, maybe signal that because my internet has been cutting in and out. When I turned my camera off, I could hear everyone perfectly, but, um, sometimes you were all cutting out, so I didn't get the full range of the conversation until my camera's off. So I may have to turn that off. So thank you for the introduction. I, uh, joined the United Way in that capacity in January of this year. And I have to say, I'm not accustomed to getting tornado warnings on my phone and alerts like I did last evening. So I don't know if you got those, but it was quite startling to me to, to get those for the Stratford area. So that's, uh, an interesting uh, new development for me to, to contend with, uh, before joint.
Okay, your volume just cut out.
Hello?
Uh, can hear you now, can't?
Oh, that.
Your volume just disappeared. There isn't like.
Yeah, so, uh, it looks like we're going to, to, um, to be having those issues, which is totally unfortunate. So I'll keep my camera off and hopefully you can continue to hear me. So before joining the United Way, I was the Director of Coordinated Access for the Affordable Housing Association of Nova Scotia. And in that role, uh, we developed many, uh, affordable housing, uh, properties across the province and certainly in Halifax in, in the city. And so I bring that experience to, to my role here at the United Way and, and our goal with the, the Community Renewal Company is to, to develop, build and operate affordable housing in Perth and Huron. So that's, that's, that's my goal. That's my, my mandate. And we have several, uh, projects in our, our portfolio that we're developing, including one in Listwell that was mentioned, which is the redevelopment of the library. And that project includes and act the, the redevelopment of the library and access center and four to forty affordable housing units. And I just want to really clarify the point. It seems like there's a difference between the county's definition of affordability, which is based on an individual's, um, ability to pay the rent thirty percent of the, of their earned income. Whereas at CMHC, it's like Pierre said, it's actually whether the rental rates are lower than the median rate for the area. So there's a little bit of a discrepancy there on how affordability is defined and it's not, I guess, unusual that different organizations in different areas have different definitions of what that is. But we all know regardless of the definition, that there is a deep need for housing units across the spectrum, whether that's market housing, attainable housing or affordable housing. And, uh, Suzanne mentioned that how there is a need in Listwell for, for all those housings across the, uh, 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 across the region. And when we look, uh, when you look at studies, I don't know if you've seen them or not, but there's studies that show that the amount of immigration that's going to come into to Perth is, is significant. It, it, it's already been building over the last few years and it's going to continue to build as people from mostly the GTA decide that they don't want to live there anymore. They want to move to, to Perth because it's a, a very, uh, attractive place to live and work. And more and more people are going to, to be doing that. And so we are going to need, um, to step up our supply of housing across the whole spectrum. And we know that the Ontario government had, um, a task force on affordable housing and they, they identified that need and they came up with a, uh, an estimate that we need a million more housing units in our province over the next ten years. And I would say that is probably more acute in this region than maybe even other regions of, of Ontario. So the project, uh, in, in north, in North Perth that we mentioned, some things that came to light was, uh, and Pierre mentioned this, was that thirties, was, was that ratio between non-residential space and, uh, residential space? And Pierre said that you can't have mixed use. That's not completely true. Uh, CMHC will allow up to thirty percent, uh, of the property to be, um, non-residential. But the, the more of that percentages goes up, uh, toward the thirty percent, the less likely they are to approve funding for those projects. So i- if you can keep it at zero, your likelihood of getting CMHC funding is, is much greater than it would otherwise be, uh, when you start playing with that ratio. In terms of the Listwell Gardens project, the one that we've been looking at today, I just want to say that United Way does not really support any specific developer with our goals to, to develop and build and operate affordable housing units. Any developer that brings, uh, a project that has affordable housing units in it, we would be supportive of. So we are supportive.
You just lost your voice.
The question that has been put forward, and I'm just going to put forward it again, is who's going to work in those commercial businesses? You need workers that can afford places to live. The, that is, is completely linked. You, you can have all the commercial property you want, and we're seeing this in, in the labor supply. If you don't have places for those people to live, you're not going to be able to fill those spaces to, to, to even complete those, uh, commercial enterprises. So it's, it's really important that when we make those considerations, we really link, uh, housing and, uh, commercial property together. I, 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 I just want to say is that maybe, uh, Pierre set a partnership at this point. I like to think that it might be too strong a word because we have a meeting later this month with CMHC to explore the ways that we can work together on this prop, uh, on this development and how we could, uh, perhaps own some of those affordable units, how we could operate those affordable units. That hasn't been determined about what that, uh, that relationship to the affordable housing units will, will look like in terms of how United Way will be involved. And I just wanted to make that clear as well. That still is to be determined. And we'll know more on that, uh, once we've met with CMHC to see what is possible. So that's all I want to say is that we're, we're supportive of this, this development because of its, it's completely necessary, uh, to, to have units and then some of those units being affordable if we're to keep our communities, uh, prosperous and resilient and, and places that we all want to live and work.
Okay. Thanks, Mitchell.
You're welcome.
Questions for Mitchell? I see Counselor Hurlick's hand up.
Yeah, no, great, uh, morning there, counsel. Thank you through you, Warden. Yeah, this is, uh, to Mitchell a little bit and, and to remind counsel, I hear this talk of, you know, people want to come to Perth. And, and of course, I, I understand that fully and the ability to move around that, that's awesome. We live in a free country and that, that's great. That being said, if a community can't sustain or a community can't afford, you know, we, we, it, there's times where growth just may not happen. It, it's, it's interesting. These conversations, I could spend an hour on this myself. You know, we have aging population. We're, we're going to have an influx of homes available that way. And it just, it gets to be a lot. We also have a report here that we're going to go over. The bigger you are, the harder you fall later on this morning. And what COVID has done to bigger cities and we, we gotta be fiscally responsible that we could be on the hook for some of these, uh, utilities as we start asset managing this and it's tough. It really is tough. Somebody, myself, in the trucking industry, where this is getting built, that's a pretty main drag into town. I have my concerns. All these stops, stoplights, roundabouts, four-way stops on major roads. Man, oh, man, is that hard on trucks. It's adding expense all day, every day. And I don't know, I always hear this talk that it's our responsibility for immigration and people wanting to move. Uh, of course, w- we want to be part of a, a thriving, a thriving economic and, and residential atmosphere, but at what pace and what rate, we have to ask ourselves. So that's what I have to say. We gotta be careful because we're going to be on the hook for these expenses as we see how this next report we got to deal with here today. There's going to be an overhauling of how finances are handled, and I believe it's going to be coming out of the local level more than ever. So be prepared. Um, that's all I have to say and thank you.
Other comments or questions for Mitchell? Counselor Duncan? Or Cal, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm working. Uh, through you, the Warden, and thank you, Pierre, for your presentation as well, Mitchell. Um, seeing this for the second time, uh, first time, I believe it was Counselor Duncan, it was, uh, July eighteenth, the council, there were similar questions and comments. And, uh, w- w- we wanted to hear that this was just, uh, an amendment to the, to the official plan. Um, this is very exciting news, uh, for Perth County and for the municipality of North Perth. And this is a starting point. Um, I'm liking, I'm liking to see the, the steps that are, are proceeding that Pierre has, uh, has presented, uh, again today. This is just, uh, an amendment to the, to the official plan and they are open to, uh, comments, not just from county council, but from people within North Perth. And, uh, I'm, uh, strongly, uh, recommending and support this, uh, proposal coming to council. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Cal. Other comments or questions? I got a quick question for Mitchell. Or comment. So we're talking about affordable housing. So if you were to come up with some financing through CMHC, do you have to sign an agreement that you will maintain that level of social housing within that unit?
Yeah, there are, there are time limits on, on those and the way CMHC structures that is, as long as uh, they have, we'll, we'll just use the term skin in the game, as long as that loan is in, in place. And often you can have fifty-year loans, uh, with CMHC, then those, um, I guess, uh, rules or covenants on, on keeping the, uh, units affordable are in place. So as long as the loan is outstanding with CMHC, so are, so are the conditions, uh, of that loan.
Okay, uh, my only comment is going to be make it as long as you can. Because once it expires, there's no help.
Yeah, that's true. And you can generally get, uh, fifty-year, fifty-year loans with CMHC. That's not uncommon. And there is even a way to, to go to fifty-five years. So there is a way to, to extend it. And to make the financing work, generally, that's what most nonprofit, especially affordable housing unit developers need to do. You, you, you can't pay it off faster than that if you're going to make the numbers work.
Agreed. Counselor McDermott?
Uh, yeah, just a quick question, question, and, um, on these units, who's responsible and for the maintenance and upkeep then? Like, is that the landlord is always going to be responsible for that? Or then does that change to somebody else?
Pierre's got his finger up there.
Uh, yes, thank you, Warden. Uh, I can answer that. Uh, that'll be, it'll still remain a private development, so it'll be up to the landlord in order to maintain the site.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions? I don't see any hands. Double check here again. Okay. I have a motion here. That Perth County Council receives report entitled Perth County Official Plan Amendment two oh six for a mixed-use development on part of Lot Thirty Concession One Elmer Award Municipality, North Perth for information. And the Perth County Council receives comments from the public regarding Official Plan Amendment two oh six to the County of Perth Official Plan Regarding Part of Lot Thirty Concession One Elmer Award Municipality of North Perth, moved by Counselor Calum, seconded by Counselor Casenberg. Last chance for comment. Those in favor? It's carried. And I have a motion that the public meeting be adjourned at ten oh five. Moved by Counselor Willholt, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? That's carried. Perfect. Thank you. We're going to move on. And now we're going back into regular council at ten oh five. So I have a motion that regular council reconvene at approximately ten oh five. Move by Counselor Casenberg, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? That's carried. We're back in the regular session. So now we're moving on to staff reports. And planning and seven point one one one. Application for modification of draft plan of subdivision. And that is Pierre and Jessica.
Jericho.
Jared, I mean. Yeah, Jericho.
Yes, hello, Warden and counsel. And, uh, yeah. You guys can hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you. So, uh, thank you for receiving my staff report. I'm just going to share my screen. Um, so what we're dealing with today is a subdivision that, uh, council may be familiar with. It was, uh, received approval on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty. Um, it's subdivision eighteen oh three Delmitch Holdings. It's within the community of Atwood in North Perth. Um, the reason that we're coming back for a modification today is due to the fact that, um, there is some conditions that the Ministry of Transportation would like to attach to the subdivision agreement as it pertains to Highway twenty-three and Monument Road. So as you can see on my screen, uh, the MTO has permit control over a hundred and eighty meters from the intersection. And as was identified in the traffic impact study, a left turn lane is warranted. Um, once the subdivision reaches a certain density, which is a hundred and eight units. So the modifications that we're asking for today, as you can see, the first phase has been registered. So up here is stage one and the developer is wanting to move into stage two. In order to do so, we need to ensure that there's a mechanism in place for that turn lane to be built. And as was proposed at the July eighteenth North Perth Council meeting, which we took to them for their information and for any input that North Perth would have, we proposed four conditions, uh, which are noted in my report. Now, subsequent correspondence with the MTO, and we have been talking with the MTO throughout this process, um, and the developer, is that the MTO is indifferent to the first condition that was mentioned. Um, they are only concerned about the R E S three being put into the subdivision agreement. That being said, I do think there is, um, there is warrant for the first condition being left, especially since the holding zone that is mentioned in condition one is already in place over phase two for securities purposes. But at the end of the day, the MTO is only looking for these three and all three of those conditions really relate to, uh, whether or not that turn lane is going to be constructed by the developer or by the MTO. And I am, as I understand, they are in, in conversation with one another over what that agreement will look like. So if counsel has any questions for me, um, also I think Sally is on the line here. If there's anything I can address, but that, that's kind of the matter at hand this morning.
Okay, thank you, Jericho. Questions for staff on this report? We have Jericho and we also have Sally. Not seeing any hands go up. I have a motion here and it's kind of almost like a book, so bear with me. Okay, the Perth County Council receives the application for modification of draft plan of subdivision by MHBC Planning Limited on behalf of Dalman. On behalf of Dolmitch Holdings Limited Number NP eighteen dash oh three Report. And Perth County Council approved the modi- modification to draft plan approval for subdivision NP eighteen oh three. By MHBC Planning Limited. On behalf of Dolmitch Holdings is limit. Limited as in the attached draft plan with revision date of August fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. And the following four amendments to the text of the conditions. One, the left turn lane is warranted at such point. As any phase or sub-phase exceeds one hundred and eight dwelling units. And that the confirmation is received from the municipality of North Perth that a holding zone has been placed. On the lands containing to be one hundred and ninth and all subsequent units. And the text of the holding zone referred to confirmation that construction of a left turn lane to the satisfaction. Of the Ministry of Transportation for southbound traffic on Provincial Highway twenty-three. At the intersection with Monument Road. Brackets line seventy-five has been completed. Two, that prior to the final approval of any phase of sub-phase containing. Or sub-phase containing the hundred and ninth dwelling. Unit for the entire subdivision that the developer enter into an agreement with the Ministry of Transportation. Regarding the design, construction and financial responsibilities of the developer. In the provision of the required highway improvements slash left turn lane. And that a copy of the agreement be provided to the County of Perth. Three, that the, that prior to the final approval of any phase or sub-phase containing lands within the Ministry of Transportation. Permit control area, MTO must receive a copy of the draft M plan. From the proponent and issue a clearance letter for the said phase or sub-phase. And that a copy of the clearance letter is supplied to the County of Perth. Four, that the, prior to the final approval of phase two, the subdivision agreement. Between the municipality of North Perth and the developer be amended to include provisions. For the required Ministry of Transportation permits prior to the commencement. Of any construction on site within the permit control area. So do I have a mover, Councilor Casenberg? A seconder? Councilor Calum? Last chance for questions. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. I was hoping you didn't want me to read that again. Okay, we're going to move on. And the next is, uh, thanks, Jerika. And next is development application status report for Q one and Q two. And I believe Sally, you're going to do that.
Yes, good morning and members of councils. Does everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Right, wonderful. I first wanted to give um, credit also to Michelle Evans who helps um. Who helped me with this report and I neglected to put that in the, in the template here, so I wanted to acknowledge her for her work on the. On collection of data and um. As I noted in the report, the collection of data and file tracking and the metrics. Particularly addressing file tracking are sort of an evolving practice here and we're looking at. Software to help us do that in a more effective way, but um, right now, um. We wanted to provide you with this first in a series of. Reports on status of planning applications and um. Intend to do that on a quarterly basis so that council has a, has a, has some. Fairly current knowledge on the applications that have been processed over the quarter previous to the meeting. And we've, we've received in the first um, half of the year up to June thirtieth, a hundred and twenty-five applications which. Which is just slightly above the um. The number of applications that we've seen sort of over the last four-year period. Um, so it is a little bit higher and um. Looking at uh, tracking site plan applications which we haven't done in the past. Um, site plan application, um, minor variance zoning amendments, those were not. Um. Something we could, we easily had a lot of data on as the single-tier service model just began um, a year ago. In March. So um, for, for that four-year period um, proceeding. So anyways, I'm hoping that this is informative to council and if you have feedback on. The, the format or the information um, that's presented and, and in any ways that it can be um. Made more clear or um, something added or, or something changed, just uh, please feel free to let us know.
Thank you, Sally. Questions for Sally? Comments? We're not seeing any hands, so I guess they like the report. Okay, I have a motion. Perth County Council receives a development application status report. For Q one and Q two, two thousand and twenty-two report. Move by. Councilor Wellhough, seconded by. Councilor McDermott. Those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Sally. And now we're going to move on to seven point one point three. Modification of the lunar subdivision draft plan approval, file number NP oh four oh one. And that is Suzanna, I believe, again. And there's Suzanna.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. So this is uh, this file will be familiar to council. Um, it was considered for um, an extension. Last October, um, the developer is now requesting um, uh, further modification. Um, so the planet subdivision is here um, on the east side of Listwell, east of uh, Train Avenue North. Um, it's, has a special policy area in the Perth County Official Plan. Um, and this is the application as it received draft approval. Um, the, the applicant is now requesting uh, further modification to define phase one. Um, so this is the request for um, the phase one. Um, uh, through this modification, so that area is here. And they've also asked for a condition um, to allow staff to have the ability to approve um, further phasing limits. This was discussed with the North Perth Council at their uh, council meeting on the eighteenth of July. Um, and North Perth Council has requested um, a revision to the modification. Um, that the staff be provided with guidance to hit the highest density target proposed for the subdivision. So the staff recommendation is that the modification be approved.
Okay, thanks, Susanna. Questions for Susanna on this report? No questions, no comments? Don't see any hands. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives a modification. Of the file number NP oh four oh one Lunar Subdivision Draft Plan Approval Report and. Perth County Council approved the modification of file. Number NP oh four dash oh one Lunar Subdivision Draft Plan Approval. To define phase one in order to register twenty-two lots. Which are not encompassed uh, in the original stage one lands shown on the draft plan. And the Perth County Council add a condition to allow staff. To approve future phasing limits. With the requirement that density targets are achieved. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Councilor Duncan, seconded by. Councilor Calum. Or actually, I'll take Councilor, right? His hand was up there and I just happened to catch you. So Councilor, he's going to second, but. Okay, last chance for questions or comments. Those in favor of that motion? That's carried, perfect. Moving on. Thanks, Susanna. And that finishes our planning reports. Thanks, Sally. Thanks, Susanna. We're going to do the head dev one. And then we're going to take a short five-minute break. Time to get stretched and get some blood circulating. So we need. Ashley and is Maggie coming on?
Ashley, Justin and Maggie. It's my understanding that Ashley will take the lead on it.
Okay. So we have uh, Maggie up there, we have. Justin. And we have Ashley. And just before you give your report. On behalf of council. Whether you like it or not, I'm going to congratulate Maggie. And Ash- and Ashley on their recent nuptials. I knew they were up and coming and I got an email one day and I thought, who the heck's that? Ashley's married. And I see also now that Maggie's married, so congratulations to you both. And we're ready for your report.
Just going to share my screen here. There we go. Good morning, council. Uh, today, Justin, Maggie and I will be presenting the Economic Development and Tourism Quarterly Update. Giving an overview of our division's activities and projects for the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-two. So Perth County Tourism Marketing continues with ads strategically placed throughout Perth County, Stratford and surrounding areas. As well as across the province. These ads range from visitor center kiosks, billboards, both digital and non-digital. Ads and publications, social media marketing and more. As of today, a hundred and ten thousand Discover More Tourism Brochures. And thirty thousand Discover More Flavor Farm Gate Maps have been distributed across the province and heavily distributed. Regionally at points of interest. Locally, these brochures and maps are available at over two hundred Perth County destinations. And are restocked on a daily basis. Both of these publications. Um, have digital counterparts with additional features that are updated on an ongoing basis. We recently launched the first of three videos in the Perth County Farms to Stratford Tables Marketing Campaign. That shines a light on local producers and restaurants. The video showcased the very short journey that food takes from local farms to local restaurants. And is another tool available to residents and visitors to learn more about how to discover, locate and enjoy. All of Perth County's incredible farm experiences and locally produced food products. These videos are being widely promoted online and have garnered very positive media coverage. They are slated for TV broadcast this fall. Onto the next slide. We continue to grow Perth County's Discover More Adventures Program that enhances and markets unique experiences offered across the county. Following the program's success in two thousand and twenty-one, we continue to build the program and add new experiences throughout two thousand and twenty-two. To date this year, we have added five new signature experiences. With three additional experiences planned to join the program this fall and winter. This program inspires residents and visitors to explore Perth County and book an adventure. Ranging from beekeeping hive tours, alpaca walking, indigenous education and crafting. Spirit horse events, indigenous-led bird watching, goat socials and more. The Discover More Adventures Program and all Perth County tourism developments and promotions. Are further marketed through strategic partnerships with influencers and digital content creators. Who promote our offerings to their audiences. These partnerships allow us to tap into organic communities, thus accelerating brand awareness and customer trust. I'll pass it over to Justin.
Great, thank you, Ashley and I'm warning to council. So through the warden, just uh, have an opportunity here to highlight some of the economic development. Uh, specific initiatives from the report. Uh, so we're pleased to once again offer our Perth County Digital Service Squad suite of services to businesses across county. Uh, since the first iteration, our DSS have conducted and delivered over a hundred and sixty-five. Business consultation services. And while we continue to operate, uh, continue to offer those services. Uh, in the interim, those digital assistance services, we're pleased to now have another full-time. Digital Service Squad team member, Ricky Zhao, who joined our team. Uh, thanks to successful grants and digital means to programs. Ricky will continue to support businesses. Uh, through, as our dedicated DSS provider through to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. And one of the critical functions that Ricky has already started on is helping businesses apply for digital transformation grants, which is. Uh, twenty-five hundred dollar grants that businesses can use to develop and implement a digital transformation. Uh, for the business and today we've helped eighteen businesses complete uh, previous iterations of that. Uh, DTG grant, uh, accessing over seventy thousand five hundred dollars in funding. So we look forward to continuing to offer that service over the next little while. I will, uh, next slide, please, Ashley. So as part of the implementation of the recommendations from our uh, BRNE project from last year, we continue to build and formalize our BRNE program. By gathering and tracking our business intelligence. Uh, this intelligence gathering uh, will help increase our knowledge or business community. Streamline and improve our communications and better target our outreach and assistance. So. Uh, we really want to help our businesses access all the resources and programs offered by our, our division and our partners. As well as help them access funding opportunities offered by upper levels of, of government. So. Uh, to this end, we're continuing to build our CRM database, our client relationship management database. Uh, and we earlier this year conducted a, a physical mail-in to. The over four hundred and fifty addresses that we had on file of businesses. Uh, in our directory, as well as offered a number of contest opportunities to encourage businesses to get on our directory so that we can. Uh, again, better have a, a grasp on their uh, their address, how we can reach them and, and really use that to target uh, valuable information to them. Uh, we also hosted a business transition succession planning webinar in June, uh, which was another one of the findings that we uncovered as part of our. Our BRNE project. So with a number of businesses. Uh, anticipating retirements or other pending transition, this webinar was an opportunity to fill both a need and a gap. In terms of introductory resources on the five stages of business transition and three common types of transitions. So we had. Uh, thirty businesses registered from across the county, uh, with most of those being able to attend the session. And for those who weren't in other businesses, we are uh, developing a condensed version of this uh, presentation to be available. Uh, again, to those who weren't able to attend and future businesses who have an interest in business transitions and succession will have this as an ongoing resource. Uh, available to them. Next slide, please. Uh, so amid the pandemic and the inability to do some of the, the business fam tours that we're all familiar with, uh, staff reimagine, you know, these opportunities showcase. Uh, what goes on behind the scenes at a number of Perth County businesses through a business spotlight series. So. Uh, the spotlight which have been developing, we have been developing in the past few months will feature stories and behind, uh, behind the scenes look at. Some of the Perth County businesses that we all know, uh, and maybe some that we don't, and uh, we look forward to launching this series in the near future. Next slide, please. And then finally for me, I just wanted to highlight the Perth County Cycle Tourism Strategy Project, which kicked off during Q two. Uh, so consulting team led by transportation options Ontario by bike. Is leading this process to enhance cycle tourism in our region. Uh, there are several opportunities for members of the public and council to, I get involved. The cycle enthusiasts. Uh, and cyclists are, are encouraged to participate uh, through attending a virtual. Uh, engagement session, completing the cycle tourism survey on our website or on the, or through our social media. As well as participating in a cycle tourism summit that we're planning to host in the fall. And I really wanted to tie that this, uh, this strategy builds on the second tourist activities that we initiated during the pandemic. As a result of the, the really explosive growth of cycle tourism as a safe outdoor and distance activity. And uh, this strategy will really help our team better understand the scope and scale of the opportunity. And provide us with some tangible direction on immediate, short-term and medium-term priority for implementation. And I'd like to now pass things over to Maggie to speak about PC Connect.
Awesome. Thanks, Justin. Uh, through the warden, we've had a very busy few months promoting PC Connect, which has had. A very positive impact on our ridership today. So from July fourth to ninth, we hosted a free ride week where we really encouraged the public to kick off summer with PC Connect. And try the service to get to places um, of interest such as restaurants, local businesses, trailheads and so much more. We launched a, a really aggressive multimedia campaign to advertise the promotion. Which included radio advertisements and interviews, um, organic and paid social media ads as well as print media. I'm very excited to share that the campaign was a huge success, resulting in a total of four hundred and eighty-three rides. Which actually represents ninety-four percent of the average monthly ridership from January to June of this year in just one week. So from the day the promotion was announced to the end of Free Ride Week was, which was just over two weeks. Uh, two hundred and two rider profiles were created. So we're very confident that the campaign succeeded in attracting many new riders and we're really hopeful that it'll contribute to, to an increase in repeat customers moving forward. Uh, evidently, Free Ride Week contributed to a very successful month in July with a total of three hundred and twenty rides on Route A. And a hundred and twenty rides on Route B, which is a hu- one hundred and forty-three percent increase in ridership on A and B since May. The graph illustrated before you hear um, actually represents all five routes, which have completed just over eight hun- which have completed just over 800, or sorry, 8,500 rides to date, which is 105% increase in ridership since May. So in order to keep this great ridership trending in the right direction, we're continuing our extensive marketing efforts through multiple channels and campaigns such as social media, a variety of different radio stations to get the best coverage possible, digital screens and billboards throughout the county and print media, just to name a few. We're also continuing our focus on community and employer outreach, where we've been meeting with different organizations to really educate about PC Connect and how it can be of value to their employees, their clients, their patients, et cetera, and to offer resources, support and always welcome feedback on the service. In terms of marketing, we're actually currently running a campaign called PC Connect For You, which uses reels to highlight different PC Connect day trip or travel options specifically for different personas. Ashley, if you won't mind, just pressing play on that video again, we'll give it another play. But the video on the screen before you was actually our first reel to kick off the campaign and it was focused on the adventurer. So as you can see, this reel featured a day trip on the G to G trails with stops at local restaurants and bakeries for food and beverages along the way. So this featured group actually traveled on PC Connect from the Listwell Bus Stop to Millbank, where they grabbed a coffee and a treat from Anno Maze and then hit the G to G trail and hiked to Melberton to grab lunch and then continued along the G to G trail to the Moncton Bus Stop to catch the ride back to Listwell. So this first video was a great start to our campaign with over 2,000 views and it actually received more interactions than 90% of the county's 50 most recent posts on Facebook. So we really look forward to continuing this campaign featuring more personas such as the athlete, the foodie, the shopper, et cetera, with the goal of really providing ideas for creative ways to leverage PC Connect beyond just accessing basic daily needs. So overall, we're extremely pleased with our PC Connect operations and ridership growth over the past few months. And we really look forward to continuing to grow the service through community and employer outreach, aggressive marketing efforts and the implementation of service enhancements as needed. So with that, our quarterly economic development and tourism update report is before you and we welcome any questions that council may have for us.
Thank you, Ashley, Justin and Maggie. Questions for any one of the three from council? Don't see any. Great job, folks. Keep up the good work. And I have a motion, Perth County Council receives the Economic Development and Tourism Quarterly Update Report. Moved by Councilor Casenberg, seconded by Deputy Warden Nagets. Those in favor, that's carried. Thank you very much. Thanks, folks. We're going to take a five-minute recess. And when we come back, we'll start on purpose services.
If everybody can just turn off their cameras and mute their mics, that'd be great.
Perfect. Well, we're going to get going here again, folks. And we're going to move on to corporate services. The first, the first report is the four or three inspectors' report from Marvin and Sue, you're doing that, Tyler?
I am, thank you. So through the warden, for council is the June 2022 Forestry Inspector's Report, prepared by Marvin Smith, the Perth County Forest Street Inspector. Marvin went out and completed five inspections in response, submission of an O S and ten or NOI. And one inspection in response to a request from a landowner. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to pass this on to Marvin.
Questions for Marvin via Tyler on that report? I don't see any. I have a motion, council receives the June 2022 Forestry Inspector's Report for Information. Moved by Councilor Duncan, seconded by Deputy Warden Nagets. Those in favor, that's carried. And I had a question for Marvin at the last meeting and I had him at my farm, I think, before the week was over.
Correct.
And solved our, sort of solved our problems. We actually have some Norway maples that I wondered if there was blight because all of a sudden I started seeing dead branches. Part of it's dry. Part of it, he thought maybe if he gave it some fertilizer, it might help, but that's how dry it is. Anyway, hopefully we're going to get them to survive. Okay, moving on, we have the automated school bus stop armed camera system. And Danette's doing that, I believe. Am I correct? Good morning there, Danette.
Good morning. Sorry about that. I was clicking away. Good morning, Warden. Good morning, council. Through the warden, as per the direction of council, staff has been hard at work researching the potential for installing stop-arm cameras on area school buses. This report is to provide you with an update. The provincial government has passed legislation to fill these camera-based systems. Municipalities can charge vehicle owners for drivers who do not stop when bus overhead lights are flashing. This is governed under the Provincial Offenses Act. However, these camera programs have not seen widespread adoption due to their high administration and adjudication cost. Due to this, staff found information was buried and very limited. To help with the extensive research involved, staff contacted KPMG LLP to possibly assist the county with this research. The cost to the county would be $50,000 in order for them to do this complex research. Staff also spoke to other municipalities, stakeholders and had several discussions with the Ministry of Transportation. During one of these discussions, the MTO advised that guidelines to the ministry were being developed and also the Ministry of the Attorney General was expected to release information and guidelines this fall. This was due to the vast interest made known by many municipalities across the province for assistance. The province is designing a guideline with detailed information, an end-to-end service for the processing of these offenses and to ensure compliance is established with all legislation and regulations involved. For this reason and for the cost savings and ensured compliance with these programs, municipalities are awaiting the release of this valuable information. Staff realizes the importance of road safety, especially the safety of our children. With these resources coming shortly from the province, MTO and AMO, this will provide council with a crucial detailed analysis of everything involved. Staff want to ensure if this program is directed to be implemented, that we have all the background required to run this program efficiently and successfully. Staff will provide timely updated information to council as received from these ministries for the potential inflammation of this system. And that's my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have at this time.
Excellent. Questions for Danette on this report or comments? Council, well known.
Yes, I think, I thought that was a very good report. The, and I would agree that it makes sense to wait. I would, however, like to see pressure continuing to be put on to them, that it doesn't fall by the wayside.
Absolutely. We'll stay in contact with the associations and the municipalities. There's a vast interest in this, so I'm sure it will not get put aside.
Other questions or comments? Okay, I have a motion here, Perth County Council receives the automatic, automated school bus stop armed camera system slash administrative monetary penalty system report. Moved by Councilor Hurley, seconded by Councilor Willhout. Those in favor? And that's carried. Thanks, Danette.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. And now we're moving on to the monthly update from corporate services. That would be Annette.
Good morning. So just a brief overview of activities in corporate.
Good morning. So just a brief overview of activities in corporate services for the month of June. Legislative services, they hosted an accessibility focused training seminar on the dynamic symbol of access on June twenty fourth. And that had thirty five attendees, and I want to commend Sean McCoy for a job well done. Archives, we're pleased to say that Archives has extended their hours. The reading room is now open Tuesday to Saturday from ten till three. I T and G I S, the strategic plan will be circulated in August, so this month, with the Perry Group presenting to council in September. At our September fourth meeting, I T and G I S has also been providing support for the official plan specifically for the natural heritage study. And they've also been providing support for West Perth Asset Management Project and Next Generation nine one one updates. Finance, finance has been working with external auditors for the twenty twenty one year end financial audit. They've also been working on the asset management plan. Finance and Public Works had attended user training with Citywide Asset Manager. And a cross section of county staff attended an introductory asset management workshop in Sarnia organized by A M O and Asset Management Ontario. For continuous improvement, I T has deployed security enhancements with a new email filter system. Which will provide more tools to improve the organization's ability to stop email related security threats and also increase the system's redundancy. Professional development, staff within corporate services attended various conferences and workshops. And staff across the corporation participated in an emergency operations center management training exercise. That focused on validating various emergency planning documents and roles. And for the upcoming month, there will be a temporary exhibit on the life and library of John Davis Garnett. That will be installed in the James Anderson Gallery of the Archives until the end of August. And I'm pleased to say that this is the Archives' first in person exhibit since twenty nineteen. So those are just a few highlights of the report, and I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions for Annette on her report or comments? Don't see any hands. I have a motion Perth County Council receives the legal corporate services June twenty second. Two thousand and twenty two update for report. Move by. Counselor Ike, seconded by Counselor Willholt. Those in favor? That's Carrie. Okay, next, we need Corey, and we have municipal taxation assessment review update.
Corey's, uh, we're waiting, he's gonna be presenting.
Who's gonna do it?
Daniel's gonna be.
Okay, Daniel's gonna present this, because Corey's on holidays. We'll get to meet Daniel. Morning, Daniel.
Morning, Warden.
Before you get started, we're ready for your report, but I just want to welcome you to the county. I honestly haven't had the ability to come meet with you in person yet.
Yeah, no, thank you, Warden. And good morning, Council. So I was, I will be speaking to a couple of reports prepared by Corey as he is off on vacation. So the first report is providing an update on the twenty twenty two municipal taxation and assessment review. As outlined in the report, county staff continue to have ongoing discussions with M P A C and the province to provide input on the ongoing review. If there's any questions on this report, I will do my best to address them, or I can pass them along to Corey once he returns.
Okay, thanks, Daniel. Questions for Daniel? Deputy Warden Nagget's.
Are we getting any closer to the government going to do the assessments for residential?
I can answer that one for Daniel. Your guess is as good as anybody else's.
I hope you had more concrete answers.
Three from my last conversations with somebody in that direction. Sometimes you might want to be careful what you wish for, too. When it comes to the farm line assessment. Anyway, other questions? Okay, I have a motion Perth County Council receives the two thousand and twenty two municipal taxation and assessment review update report. Moved by. Counselor McDermott, seconded by. Counselor Willholt, those in favor? Carrie, actually, I had a discussion with M P A C through Western Chair Warden's about a month ago, and that's where I was getting all the update information. It's going nowhere anytime soon. Anyway, we're gonna move on, and Daniel's gonna do the cost of living adjustment report, I believe.
Yeah, so the second report I'm doing here is looking at the increase in C P I for twenty twenty three, pertaining to the twenty twenty three cost of living adjustment. As you can see in the table throughout the twelve month period, the Bank of Canada has reported high inflation with all amounts being reported at three point seven percent or higher. Last year, the increase was one point four six percent, and this year, we are looking at a five point five four increase based on the twelve month average for the period ending June twenty twenty two. Due to the high inflation, the Bank of Canada has been increasing interest rates to curb these high levels of inflation. The inflation rate will hopefully decrease over the next twenty or twelve to twenty four months and have an impact on the next twelve month cycle. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Daniel? That's pretty straightforward report. The numbers are all there in black and white. So I have a motion Perth County Council receives the two thousand and twenty three cost of living adjustment COLA report. And that county council approves the rate of five point five four as an increase to the county non union salary grid. And remuneration for members of council and committees effective January first, two thousand and twenty three. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Willholt. Last chance for comment or question. Those in favor? And that is Carrie. Thank you very much, Daniel.
Thank you, Warden.
And we're going to now move on to Public Works. And we have John here, so I will let, or John or is Bill doing this?
Oh, I will take things.
Okay.
Good morning, Council. Back in May, staff brought a report for information letting council know. We'd be tendering for three separate contracts for our winter maintenance operations. Detailing the terms of the contracts in our intended approach to tender for our contracted plow runs. Two of the tendered contracts, the supply of bulk road salts and the delivery of bulk road salts will not impact the budget for the upcoming winter season. However, this report summarizing the results of the winter maintenance service delivery tender will impact the contractor line of our winter operating budget this year and beyond. The report details the tendering procedure we undertook in order to solicit as many contractors and submissions as possible. We received two bids with the submission from Stephen Evans meeting the desired specifications and preferences as outlined in the tenured documents. Staff are recommending that council award the three year contract to Stephen Evans. We have no concerns with the contractor's ability to perform the work as Stephen Evans has held several municipal winter maintenance contracts. And currently provides similar service to one of our boundary partners. As noted, the hourly rates in this submission represents a very large increase over our previous year's hourly rates. Under the former contract with the long term contractor. While we did anticipate to see an increase, I did receive inquiries from a couple of counselors about potentially bringing these services in house. Under the former contract and hourly rate, it was a cost benefit to contract out the two plow runs. However, with the new contract rates, that is not the case purely from a cost analysis perspective. However, bringing the two plow runs in house is not a spur of the moment decision. But a longer term plan that could be achieved by the end of the recommended three year contract term with Stephen Evans. There are other impacts to bringing in house, one being the acquisition and bill time for two additional plow units. And the biggest implication of staffing the plow runs on a seasonal basis. In addition to the recommendation to award the three year contract to Stephen Evans. Council may consider directing staff to bring back a report on a strategy plan and implications on bringing all winter operations in house. And my suggestions should council consider that, that it be included in our department's twenty twenty three business plan. With a report in Q one or Q two of next year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions for John? I see Counselor Casenberg got his hand up there instantly, so we'll let you go.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for the report, John. Certainly, I was one of those who reached out to you curious about the dramatic. Increase in the pricing. I certainly get a sense that the landscape is quite different, and I know some of our colleagues will have more information and more expertise than me. On this subject, but to your suggestion that we begin a process of looking at patrioting these routes into the county. I'm in favor of that. I think that we should commission a staff effort to have a look at this. I recall in the first year of this council's term, the confusion I had as a new counselor trying to figure out why it was that we had. To only two of nine, why not three of nine, or why not one of nine? What was the optimum place? And now, when you see these kind of steep rises, I think it's at least worth us having another look at this and trying to figure it out. So. Mr. Warden, in addition to any motions that are attached to this matter, I would be in favor of an additional action item. A resolution to the effect of asking staff to explore what would be involved in the patriation and including that in their business plans for twenty twenty three.
Thank you. Other comments? Counselor Willholt?
Just comment that I was very surprised that the increase, in fact, that. The Perth County, if I'm correct, pays for the fuel for these trucks. And that's on top of this large increase per hour. So further to Counselor Casenberg's comments. I would like to see a review again of having the lower tiers involved in winter maintenance. And look at one picture for all the roads, because too often our trucks, plows, run up and down the roads. Not plowing snow, but traveling across them just to get from point A to point B.
Other comments or questions? Deputy Warden Nagget's.
I hear what Bob's saying, but one thing staff, I think everyone knows this, we have different. Criteria, what a county road is, what a, and what a township road is, but if we can share, that would be great. But I do too agree that we need to look into bringing all this into house somehow. Curtis does that already, and yes, there are savings there, so. I would support that.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Ike? Just off the topic, North Perth also has a contracted one out, correct? Did they bring it in house this year? Todd, you know? Okay, I didn't know if you had done that already. Sorry. Counselor Callum, do you have any idea?
No, sorry.
Okay, no, just checking with everybody here. They don't really just know for sure, so can't answer that question, Counselor Ike. And I know in talking to John, we talked about it earlier on, we were talking about it again yesterday. We were actually surprised perhaps that we even got two bids to do winter maintenance for us. I know, John, you thought the same thing. I'm putting words in your mouth, but I know other municipalities, and I've had this discussion in Western Terror Wardens, they put out contracts for winter maintenance. And they've had absolutely no response. Biggest problem is insurance and all kinds of things. Being the big factor, I do believe it's time to take a serious run at looking, bringing this all in house. But I also agree with Counselor Willholt, but we have to look at the bigger picture and to Deputy Warden Eggers's comments. Each classification of road has a different, different level of maintenance, but it's not rocket scientists to adjust about a sand and salt you're putting on. I imagine you could do that sitting in the cab of the truck. I could be wrong. Anyway, I've got a motion here that I'm gonna add a fourth line to it. Oh, Counselor Hurley? Yep, Counselor Hurley?
Yeah, no, before you go there through your word, and yeah, again, this is something I've beat my head off, familiar with the industry of it as well. All these companies, it doesn't matter who it is, again, the baby boomers are all retiring, and they were. A class on their own of truck drivers. They really supported us for a long time. Sadly, they are all stepping out. And I agree, we need to look at this and, you know, maybe we can get some seasonal guys in through the winter. Hopefully, we can get a couple. But yeah, long term, I do see this as the way we're going to have to go. We have been down the road of looking at the lower tiers and the upper tier before. I finally come into split in hairs. Yeah, you may drive a concession every time you're out. I get it. There again, though, the classifications also is how often you're on the road, not as much as just sanding, so it's a tough one. We're, I worry, we're gonna spend a lot of money on a study, and we're gonna be split in hairs. So we go forward, we'll decide what that is when it comes, but I do support fully. We need to look at grabbing this and keeping it in house. Because it isn't going to get better. Insurance is awful, let me tell you. I know firsthand, it's been very hard on myself and my family, so, yes, we go forward, and I believe we're on the right direction. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Hurley. Just to clarify, we are not looking at hiring someone to do a study. We have most of the information in house already. This will be a staff development, correct? I see a nodding up and down of John, so, yeah, we're not looking to spend any money on any more studies or et cetera, et cetera. We've got the information. We can figure out what the costing is. Our staff are more than capable of doing that. Okay, so I have a motion here, Perth County Council, last chance in case somebody else puts their hand up. Don't see anything. Perth County Council receives the tender results two thousand and twenty two dash oh three one. Dash oh four, winter maintenance service delivery report. And that Perth County Council award tenor two thousand and twenty two dash oh three one dash oh four to Stephen Evans Limited. And the Perth County Council authorized the warden clerk to execute the agreement between the corporation, the county of Perth. And Stephen Evans Limited. And the next line I'm gonna add, and you can manipulate the wording whatever way you feel, but the next line will be that. Staff bring back a report on winter maintenance. In Q one of next year and included in their business. Development strategy for the upcoming year on bringing service with in house. And the complications are whatever they're, you can change the wording whatever way you want. You got a better way of wording that? I'll leave this up in Tyler's. Or rolling through it. But we do want to get a report back and costs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Does that work for you, Counselor Casenberg? I see he's nodding his head up and down. Anybody else? Any comment on that? Okay, do I have a? To be a kind of.
The Perth County Council directs staff to report back on winter maintenance in Q one and included in the business.
Plan.
Plan for twenty twenty three with respect to bringing service into the county portfolio.
Does that work for everyone? Does that not work for anyone? Counselor Willholt?
I'd like it added and look at coordinating with the lower tiers.
And we'll add in coordinating with the lower tiers. The timeframe's okay for you, Q one?
Through you, Warden, that'll work. Perfect.
Okay, so Counselor McKenzie?
Just getting back to Counselor Hurley's comments, and if you have to agree with him, I just wonder if we could tweak that motion. And possibly coordinate with the lower tiers, because we've been down the scroll before, and if it'll work, it'll work, but if it won't, there's possibility.
Possibly coordinating with the lower tiers, you're fine with that? You're fine with that wording? Screen, you're fine with that wording? Okay, so I'm not gonna reread that again. You've got the general gist. Do we have a secondary? Counselor Casenberg, Counselor Willholt? Councillor Kassenberg, Councillor Wellhome. Those in favor? Oh, before we vote, Councillor Kassenberg, you had your finger going there?
Yeah, just, just a quick question before we proceed here. Um, this contract proposition with Steadman Evans is three years, but what if we figure this out and we want to uh, implement at the end of year two? Um, do we have some escape clauses in the contract that allows us to give notice that we're patrioting this if that should emerge?
John, is there a clause out?
Through you, Warden, I'm not aware of a clause to um, get out of the contract early. It is, it is a three-year term contract. Um, and that's the way we've structured these contracts in the past.
Okay, but I'm gonna add one comment. Due to the fact that you may end up ordering vehicles or trucks with plow equipment, that's gonna be at least two years before you even get that equipment on the ground here. Correct?
Through, through you, Warden, that was why we suggested it be at the end of the three-year contract term, because that would supply sufficient time to, yes, I, A, for council to make a decision, would we bring this in-house? Uh, B, for us to acquire the assets, which will take some considerable time. And C, uh, most importantly, being able to come up with a strategy for staffing this.
Uh, getting the truck might be the least of your problems. Getting the driver might be a bigger issue. Right, Councillor Wellhome? He's nodding his head, yes. Deputy Warden Nagitz?
I just have another question. We um, go with the lowest tender, as long as staff has a really good reason that they can't come back at us for not choosing them?
Uh, I can sort of answer that question, and John, you correct me if I'm wrong. In the RFP or repro- request, there was a stipulation on the age of the vehicle. And that other one did not meet that, and also they only had one truck, not two. Correct? Carry on, John.
Through you, Warden. Um, yes, uh, we stipulated in the tender that our preference was to, to award this to a company that could provide two plow runs. Uh, the other request could only provide one, and we were aware that that particular unit would not meet the H requirement.
Any other questions? So we have a motion on the floor as, oh, Councillor Hurley? No, he's saying no. We have a motion on the floor. It's my movement seconded. Those in favor? Let's carry. Moving on. Okay, um. Bulk hauling of highway salts.
Thank you, Warden Nagitz. The report summarizes the tender results for the delivery of hauling of bulk road salts. This is a three-year contract which coincides with our supply of bulk road salts that the county administers on behalf of the area municipalities. We did receive two submissions this time, and staff are pleased with the results and are recommending awarding the contract to Boston San McCann Incorporated. Their submissive submission represents minor increases and will not significantly impact winter budgets. Boston San McCann has held the previous three-year contract and delivered on all obligations under the terms of that contract. Our municipal partners are in agreement with this recommendation and confirm that Boston San McCann have previously met or exceeded expectations. I would note in this contract, i- it does include a fuel price adjustment, which can affect the actual cost of the service. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for John on this tender result? Don't see any hands going up. I have a motion Perth County Council receives the tender results two thousand and twenty-two dash oh three one dash oh five. Delivery and hauling of bulk highway salts report and Perth County Council award tender two thousand and twenty-two dash oh three one dash oh five to Boston San McCann Incorporated. And the Perth County Co- Council authorized the warding clerk to execute the agreement between the corporation of the county of Perth and Boston San McCann Incorporated. Move by. Councillor McDermott seconded by Councillor Wellhome. Questions? Doug, Councillor Ike?
I, I just had a question that, doesn't Milverton get their salt right at the Milverton Yard, and why is it twelve sixty-eight? And the Milverton Yard is seven fourteen? Or is or is it two way different places? Like, I assume this goes by mi- does everybody see that? For, for these shop is a quarter of a mile around the corner from Milverton County Shop, only the salt's almost twice as much a ton to deliver. Or am I missing, I must be missing something, John?
Through you, Warden. Uh, yeah, I'm not quite following you, Councillor Ike. Uh, so Perth County Milverton Yard is actually, uh, the salt sand storage is located on Perth East property on line sixty-one, right around the corner from our, our Perth County Yard on one thirty-one. Uh, we both utilize the salt and sand from that facility, meaning Perth East. And uh, out of that particular yard, we just use a treated salt.
I think Councillor Ike was referring, if you look at the actual chart here, it says the Perth County, Milverton, Ontario is seven fourteen. The unit price per ton. Then if you go further down, the municipality of Perth East, it says twelve sixty-eight.
Through, through you, Warden. That's to their uh, um, the Perth East total yard, which is over off of uh, one oh seven and is it forty or?
So Amory, yeah, over by Amory? Okay, that's the difference, and that's the mi- okay, that's just the mileage factor I couldn't figure out. Okay.
I got you now.
Okay, so we did have a mover and a seconder, believe, didn't we?
Correct.
Last chance for questions? Those in favor? That's carried. I'm gonna move on. So notice emotions. Don't believe we have any other business. Anyone get anything other, under other business? Oh, yeah. Where the heck did that go to? There we go. I got two bylaws first, sorry. Too many pieces of paper floating around here. I have bylaw three eight 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 dash two oh two two, be ready first, second, and third time. And finally passed this fourth day of August, two thousand and twenty-two, and that is to do with the agreement with Boston San McCann. Councillor McKenzie moves, seconded by Councillor Duncan. Those in favor? That's carried, and then I have bylaw three eight eight nine dash two oh two two, be ready first, second, and third time. And finally passed this fourth day of August, two thousand and twenty-two, and that is to do with the agreement with Stead and Evans. Move by. Councillor Hurley, seconded by Councillor McDermott. Those in favor? That's carried. Now we're gonna move on to notice motions, which we don't have any. And other business, anybody get any under, under other business? And announcements? I have one here. Actually, one and a half. So I was up to, we, Todd and I discussed the Listable Fair Parade at our last meeting, and that was a huge success. And I gotta give congratulations to the Listable Fair Board. Sounded like they had one tremendously well-attended event over the weekend. And I have a second or another announcement here, and this is in addition to his current responsibilities as general manager. Uh, Mike Adair, uh, Metavi Health and Services and Director of, Director and Chief Perth County Paramedic Services has been appointed to lead Ontario operations by Metavi, where he will be responsible for the strategic oversight of Metavi's Ontario operations. And we wish to extend our congratulations to Mike on this appointment. And just before you get real nervous, Mike's still going to be our Director of Paramedicine, or Paramedics, I should say, not Paramedicine. Uh, he really likes working in Stratford, but he has taken on an additional challenge to go along with his duties, and we congratulate Mike, and I am more than sure he is capable of doing it. Anyway, other announcements, nothing? Close session. Uh, Perth County, we have a need a motion, the Perth County Council moves to close session at eleven twenty. In accordance with section two thirty-nine of the Municipal Act, to consider, one, a matter pertaining to security of municipal property. And two, a matter pertaining to information supplied in confidence to the municipality. Um, do I have a mover and a seconder? Councillor Callum, Councillor McDermott. Those in favor? Carrie, so we're uh, so we're down to just a couple by, or a couple things, and one would be the confirmatory bylaw. And that is bylaw number three eight nine zero dash two oh two two. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council corporation of the county of Perth at its regular reading held August fourth, two thousand and twenty-two is read a first, second, and third time, and finally passed August fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Moved by Councillor Kassenberg, seconded by Councillor Wellhome. Those in favor? That is carried. And last but not least, a motion that county council meeting be adjourned at eleven forty-four. Move by. Councillor McDermott seconded by Councillor Wellhome. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much.